As we strive to make the right decisions for our city and its citizens. Bless our city as we go forward during this season of pandemic. We ask for your divine protection and discernment in the days ahead. Bless our city manager, our staff and employees, and most of all our citizens, and those in our viewing audience today. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Our place of allegiance. To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion received and filed a call letter that you received for this special meeting.
I'm with. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. A motion received and filed a minutes for our regular meeting held on June 11th, 2020. Our call meeting held on June 18th, 2020. Regular meeting held on June 25th, 2020. Our call meeting held on June 26th, 2020. And our call meeting held on July 22nd, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing your reports, commissioners?
Just want to welcome everybody in our viewing audience today. I just have a few. I was walking on Winchester Avenue this morning, and I walked in and saw the, they're putting the finishing touches on the Murphy's Building. And the contractors were there, and they said they're just about finished. I went into Witz, to the coffee bar, and had a latte, and walked across the street to the Broadway Square. And I envisioned myself drinking that coffee on Broadway Square next month. What's the, what's the timeline, Mayor? What do you think?
I hope, I hope to have a cup with you, Commissioner. As you've noticed, they're doing plantings this week. And the monumental pots that are already filled, and Kim Jenkins is taking care of that. If you drive up 29th Street, you can take a sneak peek at it. But when they're installed, it's, it's going to change the whole look of that place, obviously. The fountain people, let the manager add anything he needs to. The fountain people are there this week, and hopefully today or tomorrow, they're, they're training our staff. Because it's, on the south side of, of that square is, there's a trap door. You go down there, if you looked at, just looked down in there, it looks like what people have pools in their home, or in their backyards. It's basically operating like a pool system. Chlorination, and the water pumping in and out, you know, so the fountains keep, keep fresh water in there. And it, and the fountains are going to do a lot of stuff, so it's, it's all part of it. We're going to try to make sure that our own people have the ability to troubleshoot, you know, if anything goes, goes wrong with them. We're going to have some security cameras put in place. We're going to, I think we've already had to make sure that we, skateboarders did not utilize that area. And I'm, and I've got some fears that they may want to test it out, and it isn't what it's for. And I'm also concerned about, you know, if they tried to do anything around the fountains for that matter. And I, you know, I just hope the parents and citizens, you know, encourage anybody that, that could do something to damage what's there would, would work with. It belongs to our citizens, so I'm hoping that they'll be vigilant. If they are see, happen to see something going on down there that they don't think should be going on, that they'll let us know, let our police department know. And I know the chief's going to, you know, they're going to keep track of it as closely as possible. But it's probably going to be after Labor Day, because we want everything completed. And I'm not, I'm not sure how soon after Labor Day, because the, the bank is going to take care of the front, front of the building, the wa, new walkway there to blend in with that new construction. So that work is ready to start. And there's a lot of wiring, electrical wiring, under, under the sidewalk there. That's, it's, it's a real maze of stuff that feeds Lexington, or Winchester Avenue. So it looks like you're just going to do something, but it's a little more complicated than that. But we're still good. You know, when we first, you know, when we first started and set a date to construct, we were hoping it would be done before POG landing days. Well, I'm, I'm confident it will be, even though we're not having POG landing days, unfortunately. But I think the timetable was good. I feel pretty confident it will be done at, at the latest, maybe mid-September. But we want it completed, you know, finishing touches on it and everything. So it's really, I know some of you walked it already, it's just amazing, the, the concrete work that this contractor did. It's just amazing what they've done over there. I, I think our people will be, be very proud that this is in the center of our town. Manager, do you have anything you could add on the, on the Broadway Square?
Mayor, you pretty much covered everything. There are a couple other, one, storage for the movable chairs that we're going to have. We're working very closely with Community Trust Bank leadership. They're offering us some options. This afternoon, we're also going to look at a couple locations that they're possibly willing to allow us to build temporary structures, because accountability of that furniture for events is a big part of that. And I think the only other thing is the work that Destination Ashland is doing right now on what will branch out from there, whether it's additional hanging lights, things of that nature. Destination Ashland's put in for grants, numerous grants, in, in an effort to get that money. And the only other thing I wanted to add on your comments about the, the work in front of Community Trust Bank, the city will still be responsible for turning those Cobra Head Lights into Acorn Lights. And also, I believe there's one of the new streetlights that replaces those 1970s era looking lights. We'll be responsible for that. But the lion's share of the work, and you already touched on the hodgepodge of electricity that's at that corner in particular is going to be a challenge. And DebCon is, well, that's actually on this agenda for the timeline extension. But other than that, I think you hit everything, Mayor.
Well, our good friend and, and community activist Andrew Jones, being the president there, he's been great to work with. Obviously, as I keep reminding him, it's, it's side yard. They're at the bank, it's going to enhance that bank no end, and, and they recognize that. But they're, they're being good community partners, and stepping up and assisting financially with some of the, the final activities there, which we are very appreciative of that. The rest, commission, anything?
I don't have anything.
I, I just want to make a comment. I really want to take this opportunity to thank our city employees. You know, not all of them have the option or the luxury of working from home. And they have been able to show up every day and make a difference, and continue offering the services that our citizens expect. And I also want to thank our city manager and his team for making sure we have all the PPE they need. I have driven all over town and seen different departments wearing masks. And that too is important. And our, our staff's going above and beyond to make sure they have what they need, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner. And yeah, I think we, all of us, from, from commission to our supervisors, and all of our employees, need to be good role models for our citizens, that, that we're wearing them to protect them. And hopefully by so doing, we're also protecting ourselves. But it's, you know, there are places around here, and certainly through the, throughout the country, that still think it's, it's okay not to wear a mask. And it's crazy that you have to wear it and all that. So, you know, Kentucky's got a couple spikes the last couple days, but we still are so far under the major radar of what's happened through the country. And I think a lot of it's been through the leadership of Governor Beshear. He's taken some real hits for it. But, you know, he has young schoolchildren, he wants in school, he'd love him to be in school. And he's trying to, to be as reserved as possible in, in ensuring good health for everybody. And, and that's, I mean, that's number one, no matter what. Safety and health for our people. And Commissioner Perkins, thank you for all the attention on the riverfront. The flowers, the plantings, they absolutely look beautiful. I've gotten all kinds of comments from people that have been calling my office, they just love it. More and more people are spending time down there, and well they should. We have a beautiful walking trail. Commissioner Goode, your major responsibility in that. And the statues, and looking at the river, and the beautiful blue and green bridge, which I had done. With another lifetime, it seems, right now, many years ago. But anyway, it's just a beautiful place to go. And, and my wife and I, anytime we're running down Green Bay Avenue, we pull over there. We just have to. And the, some of you I know probably got the, the email from Hennes, that he has completed his book, and is going to send us copies when it's off the press. And then I've, you know, I've had, I've had people ask to help in any way they could to promote that book, and put it in their stores. So I think through tourism office, I haven't talked to Chris much about it, but you too, the tourism offices obviously should have.
Yeah, and actually, when we talked about it, either a tourism meeting or a Destination Ashland meeting, they kind of run together, but several of the downtown business owners said, hey, I'll take some and sell them out of my place, and that kind of thing.
And that's kind of what you do in small town America. I know the museum would probably sell them for us over there. I'm, I'm, I'm sure that Dr. Gifford at the Jesse Stewart Foundation would, would help promote that too. But Hennes is very excited about it. I think it's going to be an unbelievable book. I haven't, I mean, other than the email, he sent me kind of the front cover and all that, but it, I think it's going to be great. And he's, it's, it's basically going to be all around the world. It's going to be available all around the world. So that gives us a little extra impetus to small town America here in Ashland. And they're, you know, it's called, it's the, the Sculptures of Ashland. I'm still so proud of it.
That's so amazing.
Yes, kind of hard to even talk about. It's so proud of it. Okay. City manager?
Just a couple areas to add to Commissioner Perkins regarding the PPE. A lot of people don't know our city staff, specifically finance, risk management, APD, and I'm probably leaving somebody out. We're days ahead of a lot of the country on getting PPE. And it put us in a really good position from the beginning. And then Mike Atkins' ability as risk manager to manage that and track it, I'm glad you noticed that. For our community, if you see any of our people in position, guys in a, digging a ditch aren't going to be wearing a mask. They're trying to maintain social distancing. We have had a couple of reports of people that haven't been in masks at the right place at the right time. We appreciate that. From my foxhole, it's only been people that have forgotten about it. I know I've stepped out of the car before and walked into a store and forgotten it. So I think the team, the city team has bought into.
Well, I'm 100% compliance when I'm around town.
That's awesome to hear.
I was driving through my neighborhood last week, and two of our employees were meeting with a resident. I assume it was water or sewer related, I don't know. But they literally were standing about 12 feet from her in her yard, and she was kind of on her porch, and they had on their masks. And I was like, oh, good job, guys.
But the, the directors have definitely bought into that and pushed that. And also, Mayor, what you're talking about on the riverfront, as we've evolved through this, and, you know, we had the park closed, Commissioner Perkins was sending me pretty regular texts about the garbage cans down through the riverfront. And we haven't made a connection on how much more popular that was becoming. This is before the flowers. So we made some adjustments based on observations to get the trash out of there. And it really has, let alone the walking trail, let alone the statues, let alone the flowers, it's just really amped up in popularity as a, as a byproduct of what's going on with the COVID. So just great for our citizens to see it, and now they're returning customers, if you will, to go down there, but.
You know, it, it kind of begs the question that, because I know he's been really on top of that, because he usually sends me picture of anything he sees down there. You know, like I've got a pickup and a shovel, I can run down there real quick and do myself. But I'm glad he does that. But we did have a small packer. We still have that small.
Mini packer?
Yeah.
We have two mini packers, Mayor.
Okay. Well, you know, one could, you know, I thought, not long after you called me that first time, I thought we should have like a, like once a week, that small packer just go down there and, and.
They're, they're down there every day.
They're down there every day.
Every day now?
I can, I see them every day.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's.
Fair enough.
And it's what I described, is just there's so much more traffic down there. The weather and all that, people want to get out, but.
Which is what we want.
Exactly. Mayor, Commissioners, only two things, both utilities related. Progress continues to go on the water treatment plant. Tech coat is finishing the second set of AWI filters on filter one. We suspect that AWI, the company will be in to verify the installation, and that should be running next Monday. So we'll have two filters of the six with the AWI filters. As part of this, as part of this effort, we discovered some other historical challenges at the water treatment plant. It's very fortuitous that we found them when we did. Those are being corrected. And we're very optimistic and anxious about when these filters are in and the capacity we're going to have quality. Again, I want to reiterate, quality's never been at risk. Capacity is what we're going to see a difference in. And the other, other thing I want to note is the city engineer, Mr. Cole, Mr. Hall, utilities director, and James Morgan, our superintendent at the water treatment plant, and I went on a tour of five different wastewater treatment plants throughout the region. It was with our contractor, their name's eluding me right now, but it's very educational. It is allowing us to set the table for what our plant will look like when we do the renovation to it. So very educational, and time well spent. I sent you all some pretty graphic pictures of what I'd seen at, at some of those plants. But it was amazing to see how plants that have been upgraded, how they're operating so much more efficiently, and some even have the capacity to generate revenue. So we're considering all that as part of our study. And unless you had any questions, that's all I, all I had today.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Anybody else? Okay, old business item A.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving amendment number one between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Ashland Community Kitchen, the sub-recipient of $21,000 from the 2019 program year community development block grant CB funds, extending the contract 90 days to September 28th, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Item B.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving amendment number one between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Ashland Senior Center, the sub-recipient of $11,000 from the 2019 program year community development block grant CB funds, extending the contract 123 days to October 31st, 2020.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item C.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving amendment number one between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Community Assistance and Referral Service, Inc., cares, the sub-recipient of $10,000 from the 2019 program year community development block grant CB funds, extending the contract 90 days to September 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item D.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Ashland and Tribute Contracting and Consultants LLC for the waterline replacement project Simpson Road in the amount of $665,498 for the Department of Utilities.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item G.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract between the city of Ashland and Womack Excavating LLC for the city of Ashland Power Mills Storm Drain Gutter, Curb, Sidewalk, and Paving Project Phase Two in the amount of $385,061.15 for the Department of Community and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item F.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number five between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Debcon, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $3,458 regarding the 16th Street Plaza renovation project for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item G.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky amending article 20 of the agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Ashland City Police Members Fraternal Order of Police, Ashland Lodge Number Three, as adopted by ordinance number 171, series of 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item H.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky adopting the job description for the position of Traffic Technician 1/2 as a replacement for the two job descriptions of Traffic Technician 1 and Traffic Technician 2, adopting the job description for the position of Field Supervisor, both in the Department of Public Services Division of Street Maintenance, adopting the revised job description for the position of Assistant Corporation Counsel in the Department of General Government Division of Legal, and amending the authorized positions to reflect said changes of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item I.
Second reading and final adoption of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and approving change order number two between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Granted Inletter LLC, increasing the contract in the amount of $121,044.98, adding extensive point repairs on Auburn Avenue and increased sewer cleaning on Winchester Avenue from 39th Street to 55th Street for the Department of Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Consent agenda.
Resolution of the city of Ashland, Kentucky adopting, authorizing, and improving the course of action presented by the city manager on the items appearing on the consent agenda for the special meeting in the Board of City Commissioners of August 13th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Any, any questions or discussion on any item on the consent agenda?
Just a note, I'm thankful to see some furloughed employees coming back. Makes me happy.
We're trying to do that everywhere we can. We know the commission is very strong for that. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Thank you. New business. Item A.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a project services agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Assuraco Risk Management and Regulatory Compliance LLC, DBA Municipal H2O, to complete a risk and resilience assessment and development emergency response plan for the city's water system in the amount of $34,000 for the Department of Utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item B.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and improving change order number six between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and Debcon, Inc., increasing the contract amount by $54,162 and 28 calendar days regarding the 16th Street Plaza renovation project for the Department of Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item C.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a school resource officer agreement between the city of Ashland, Kentucky and the Ashland Independent School District Board of Education for the term July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item D.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky amending the authorized positions list of the Policies and Procedures Compensation Plan and Classification Plan as adopted by ordinance number 51, series of 2017, as previously amended.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Like sign. Item E.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to the city of Ashland, Kentucky prohibiting the operation of golf carts, utility vehicles, and all-terrain vehicles on all public roadway, streets, or highways within the city of Ashland.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I thought we already had this. Is this something different than what was already in place?
We don't have it, we did not have it as an ordinance. We don't have it, we did not have it as an ordinance. The police department and legal department believe that this was already prohibited by state law, but there's been some dispute about that, and so this is a belt-and-suspenders type situation, just to make it perfectly clear.
Thank you for the clarification. Like I said, I always thought that it was already in place.
Because last fall or something, wasn't it somebody who was here about it, and the state, we found out that the state did cover it.
We believe state law does, but it is a point of debate with some individuals that the chief and myself have been involved with, and some other cities have done this as well, just to eliminate the debate, and that's the purpose.
Did Owensboro do this recently?
Owensboro did it previously, yes.
So what is it, counselor? Is it horsepower factor, is it width or length of the vehicle? I mean, I've seen in Florida where, like Bass Pro Shop sells these, they're all-terrain deals, they're pretty good size, and I've seen them with a license plate on the back of those. And is it how fast they go, chief, or y'all?
No, this has to pay, for it to be a vehicle, it has to meet federal motor vehicle safety standards. We don't have a program for that, and place to inspect those. Two, we don't have a way to designate roadways for these to drive on that don't cross state highways. And what the council's talking about is the things that are already in the state law, we don't have.
Right, and it would require, there is a state statute that, under certain designations and some of the type vehicles you're talking about can be approved by a city, it's not mandatory, but then you have to do inspections, you have to ensure that they're licensed, that they're insured, and it's frankly, we're not set up to do that. And we believe, as a matter of public safety, I think the chief agrees that we think it's a public safety issue for those type of vehicles on our streets.
My only concern is, I know that during specific public events, that we do have vehicles like golf carts being used between locations, especially when we had events on the riverfront and we had events at the park, and they were taking public streets to get golf carts back and forth.
We do, and we, there is an exception, and the second section of the ordinances I drafted accepts, first of all, police officers in the course of their scope duties.
So they have to get specific permission if any event needs.
But any event that is, the exception is any festival that's authorized by the Board of Commissioners, then the organizers during that event are exempt from that statute. So for instance, summer motion or, you know, any of the festivals that we.
We're hoping to be at a festival city, so.
Exactly. And if it's been approved by the commission, then under this statute, they can utilize those for that purpose.
Got you.
What's the ramifications, say if you, the police drive upon a bunch of kids on a bunch, on one of these, what do they do? Just warn them, or?
Well, that'd be a matter of discretion. They can be fined, and of course, but they can, I would suspect that warnings are what will be given most of the time initially.
We've had everything from a DUI arrest and one so far. We have had.
My goodness.
Young children operating these things that are below the age of 10. We felt like it's necessary to contact the parents. We've also had adults that are driving these things that have been given multiple warnings, and we've issued citations as appropriate in state law. So it is becoming a major factor for us and concern for safety, and we have received more than just a handful of complaints in certain areas of the city of young children driving these things.
They don't have seat belts.
They don't have any, and some of these may have lights or things of that nature, but we're having children in competition with full-size automobiles on our road.
And they're not built with crash standards and all the sorts of things that automobiles and that sort of thing.
If you're a gated community, that's one thing, but when you're using our open public streets in a neighborhood, it's dangerous. I trust your judgment, your officer's judgment on that.
Commissioner, specifically, it lists fines anywhere from 50, but not to exceed $200 as part of the ordinance.
50 to 200.
Correct.
Well, there was one that passed my house the other night, it was pitch black.
Yeah.
There was no lights, and it was a bunch of kids, you know, and, you know.
I saw one the other night and made contact. It was two adult females, had their three and four-year-old children in their lap riding and stuff.
Okay, that's enough for us. On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Item F.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Renaming Judd Plaza Located at the Corner of 16th Street, Formerly Broadway and Winchester Avenue as Broadway Scare Square, or Scare.
It may be a little bit of both.
And repealing ordinance number 140, series of 1990.
Same move. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Thank you. Item G.
Item G, first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Naming the Area Located Between 13th Street and 18th Street and from Greenup Avenue to Carter Avenue, the District, as Recommended by Destination Ashland.
Move. Second.
And again, I thank all these people, and at some future meeting, I'd like to get them in here and where we can all thank them publicly for all the time they're putting in, and they're still putting it in. So, and I think what goes along with it, it's kind of an ongoing thing, managers, is that correct? I mean, they'll be.
Every two weeks, man.
Yeah, and they'll be meeting for years, I guess, maybe not as frequently, but to make sure things keep moving.
Things will continually evolve, and responsibilities and duties will lead over to other organizations.
Sure. Well, we want to, we all want to publicly and personally thank them. On favor?
My turn to say thank you.
Close the like sign. Good for you. Item H.
Item H is first reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Ashland and Kentucky Power Company Regarding the Leasing of Parking Spaces on the West Side of 17th Street Between Winchester Avenue and the Alley Running Parallel to Winchester Avenue and Greenup Avenue from 16th Street to 17th Street.
Move. Second.
Any discussion?
Mayor, just for your all's edification, how this comes to you, it was considered in the internal staff traffic committee, and the recommendation was six to four, I believe, against this proposal, and I will go on the record that I recuse from any consideration of that because of my relationship to Kentucky Power. We've put it on the agenda in the affirmative because, you know, that's, it comes back to you to either approve or disapprove. I mean, the arguments, there were good arguments on both sides in staff for why we would want to do it, obviously to encourage the development and the investment in property and employees that Kentucky Power has made. I think the only downside against it was the concern that we might be on a slippery slope because every business would like to have parking places like that, and we're not always able to do that. But at any rate, that, it was sort of a divided, so it gets thrown back to you all to make the decision.
Well, I've been in several discussions on this, and I think we arrived at, you know, it's a major company, a number of employees, a major investment in our downtown, they're paying a lease payment for, and we said we would do it for a year.
This is for a year and not automatically renewable, we'd look and see how it worked at that point in time.
See how it works. And I think it's a very reasonable thing to do.
And it's also.
We try to accommodate all businesses to the best of our ability, and that's what we're doing here.
It's also limited, Mayor, eight to five, Monday to Friday.
That's correct. It's not exclusive, it's for business hours.
Got you. Okay, on favor?
Aye.
I'd stay.
Close the like sign. Item I.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Amending Ordinance Number 55, series of 2009, previously amended by ordinance number 45, series of 2010, ordinance number 77, series of 2014, ordinance number 81, series of 2018, and ordinance number 10, series of 2020, commonly known and referred to as the loading zone ordinance, amending the legal description of the loading zone located in the 1500 block of Carter Avenue.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Item J.
First reading and approval of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance to the City of Ashland, Kentucky Designating a Handicapped Parking Space on the North Side of Carter Avenue in the 1500 block at the intersection of Carter Avenue and 16th Street and Providing a Penalty for the Violation of this Ordinance.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Item K.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the City of Flatwoods, Kentucky Authorizing Ashland and Flatwoods Police Officers to Exercise Their Powers Throughout Both Cities in Order to Combat Illegal Activity.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? I appreciate the two departments working together on this. On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Item L.
Reading and adoption of a municipal order entitled A Municipal Order of the City of Ashland, Kentucky Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Execute an Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between the City of Ashland, Kentucky and the Greenup County Fiscal Court on behalf of the Greenup County Sheriff's Office, authorizing Ashland officers and Greenup County deputies to exercise their powers throughout both Ashland and Greenup County in order to combat illegal activity.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. Any other new business?
Just a second, Mayor.
Okay.
Let me just. We may have had some technical issue with the broadcast, and because this is a special